Okay, ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to call the city council meeting to order. This is Tuesday, March 1st, 2011. We'll start with our invocation, followed by our pledge of allegiance. Invocation tonight, our city manager, Andrew Pazmat. Please rise.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for all your wonderful creations that surround us. We thank you for being a God of loving kindness, merciful and righteous. We ask that you help our leaders and provide them with the guidance and the wisdom to make the difficult decisions that serve the best interests of this community. May your Holy Spirit bring peace and love to all who call upon your name and help those that are weak in spirit. May we bring honor to you in all our conduct and actions and forgive us when we fall short of your expectations. And may the heavens and earth always declare your honor and glory forever. Amen.
Please join with him. Pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Chris, can you help us out here with the roll call?
Absolutely. Mayor Chairman Harper?
Here.
Mayor Protem, Vice Chairman Tuohy?
Here.
Councilmember Commissioner Armbrus?
Here.
Councilmember Commissioner Lang?
Here.
Councilmember Commissioner Sanderson?
Here.
All present and accounted for, would we have a report out from closed session, City Attorney?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. The record should reflect that the city council convened this evening for the items that were listed under conference with labor negotiators, both the various employee groups and the various miscellaneous unrepresented management employees. The record should further reflect that all members were present, with the exception of Mayor Protem and Vice Chairman to the Commission, Mr. Tuohy. That a briefing was provided to the city council concerning these matters. There was no final action taken and there's nothing further to report at this time. It's appropriate to continue with the open portion of the meeting.
Okay, thank you. City Manager, are there any changes to the agenda?
I have no changes to the agenda.
Okay. With that, we will move into oral communications. This is the time when residents can approach the council and discuss the items that are within our purview here on the council. You have five minutes' time limit. First speaker is Jesus Novoa, I think it is.
Good afternoon, Mr. Jesus Novoa. Wes Covina. And I've been here before for, what we got through was promised was a striping of the street and I guess a speed meter or sign has not been in place. So my requesting now again is to maybe get a stop sign placed in Swanee in orange, if possible.
We'll have our staff get back to you on that and I think they have to do a traffic study or something.
Everything was approved for the striping and the sign, but it has not been implemented or put in place.
Okay. Shannon, do you have anything to report on? He's our city engineer.
I don't recall the location, but I can get back to you if you want to grab my card and I'll call you.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you. Joaquin Castaneda?
Mayor, Mayor Protem, my name's Joaquin Castaneda, District Director for our Assemblymember Roger Hernandez. Wanted to come and formally introduce myself to each and every one of you and you know that we're here to be of assistance to you and to the residents of Wes Covina and those of the Assembly District, of the 57th Assembly District. Wanted to also, as well as a flyer for a budget town hall that we'll be hosting the 12th of March in the city of Azusa. We plan to have different events throughout the district to be able to reach out to the different constituents in the city. As you know, we're facing more than a $25 billion budget deficit with Assembly, I mean with redevelopment agencies possibly on the chopping block and that's a big concern to the Assemblymember. He does wish to reach out to all the different cities, city councilmembers, city managers to come up with some meaningful reforms to the redevelopment agencies and not see them cut. So we definitely would like to see, invite you to the town hall as well and let you know that we're here to be of assistance to everyone here. Thank you.
Thank you. Frederick Sykes?
Good evening, council, members of the city staff, members of the audience. I am Frederick Sykes, resident of Wes Covina. Members of the public have some concerns that would like to bring your attention. And the first one is as to involve the commissioners that we have. We have a commissioner's handbook that somehow folks have gone counter to what that book advises, especially when it comes to public speakers. We have some commissioners that have been attacking public speakers here at the lectern and in the media. There appears to be some discouraging comments and some judgment that's been cast towards the speakers. In the spirit of the open government, the commissioners are appointed to be receptive and listen to the public. The next issue, and this is something that's been repeated time and time again, and I want to reiterate that in a most extraordinarily bad way, the city has been seeking private funds for the WC initials on the hillside, pursuing, we've been pursuing grant funding for the Dog Park. But in the meantime, the residents have suffered since 2008, a needless lack of transparency and that we have yet to restore the live broadcasts and the internet access. And it's unfortunate that our council, for some reason or another, has not shown the same type of enthusiasm to restore this project that we've given towards the items that were mentioned in regards to initials and the Dog Park. So hopefully we can please get you to reconsider and give priority to that broadcast. Now, finally, the home auto repair ordinance. This is onerous and unconstitutional. Yes, there may be some neighbors that have problems with people who, under these tough times, have been trying to perhaps run a business of auto repair out of their homes. That definitely needs to be addressed. We know that in Covina, we had a guy that stored 50 cars on the streets.
Mr. Sykes, this is a public hearing item, so if you want, you can speak under public hearing.
Well, hopefully I can finish. I'm almost there.
Okay.
Thank you. As I was saying...
I don't have a card for you on the public hearing, so I'm assuming you're not talking on that one.
I'm sorry?
I don't have a card for you on the public hearing, so I'm assuming you're not talking on the public...
No, sir. That's why I'm trying to finish up now, if I can be allowed to do so. Thank you. As I was saying, we have a gentleman that has stored as many as 50 cars. That's an eyesore and disruptive to the community, so I can understand that you want to address that. But also, please keep in mind, these are still very tough times. And we have some of us who have, since we were first learning how to drive, we've had help from neighbors helping each other keep their cars running, to tune them, help with the repairs and so forth. And minor repairs to have neighboring feuds that's run over into City Hall, because that's what it seems to be when you have people that consistently call over a neighbor doing minor repair. So hopefully you will keep in mind that, yes, we have a couple of problems that need to be addressed, but the minor auto repair, to make that illegal, is very harmful to certain folks', their budgets. So we ask you to please consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Alfred Williams?
Good evening, Mayor Herford, Mr. Tuohy, Ms. Armbrus, Ms. Lang and Ms. Sanderson. I'm here tonight, usually I don't like to get on these personal issues, but Mr. Tuohy brought something up at the last meeting, that they spent 100, I mean 1 million, 1.8 million on Shadow Oak Park and the neighbors within this area around Shadow Oak Park didn't volunteer, there were no volunteers to do anything. Well, I think Mr. Tuohy owes the whole neighborhood an apology, because we did volunteer. We tried to volunteer money for trees. We tried to volunteer a lot of items. He also needs to apologize to the messmen's, who went around the neighborhood and got, collected money to build the basketball courts that are now at Shadow Oak Park. He needs to apologize to the San Jose Little League when it moved from Aroma to Shadow Oak Park. And that was Rick Melendez, who was one of your commissioners, who helped build that field, who helped maintain those fields. He owes an apology to Rick Mercado, Rick Keller, Mike Miller, I mean Bob Miller, who was a district president for a while, Alan Kunahara, who suffered the dump because his house was one of those that were filled with gas. You owe an apology to those people, Mr. Tuohy. To sit up there and say that you spent 1.8 billion dollars on a park and nobody in the neighborhood did any volunteer work, there was no volunteer work accepted to do that 8 million. And that park went for 30 years without any money being spent on it. So I think you shouldn't be sitting up on the diocese making erroneous statements like that. It is very hurtful to the neighborhood. It really made me angry and I didn't think you would stoop that low. I really didn't think you would, because I've never seen you do that before and I had more confidence in you than that. But to sit up on this diocese and say you spent 1.8 million and the neighborhoods in the south didn't even volunteer to do nothing, it's ridiculous. It's absurd. And I hope you don't do that again, because that was beyond you, I think. But you did it. You misrepresented the facts. And I know that there's one person up there with his little smile, I expect that out of him, but I didn't expect it from you. And I hope you rectify this situation. Thank you very much.
Mr. Tuohy?
Just to clarify the point, because you take it somewhat out of context, we are talking about the difference so the residents understand. Maverick Field, where we got bids of 1.3 million to do work on it, and instead the parents did all the work and by having volunteers build what we did over at Maverick Field, the city saved 1.2 million. Now, that is what I said. I didn't say anything about the south side. I was comparing two park projects we had done recently, so there's a big difference between the two, number one. Number two, the Aroma Ball Field was moved way before I was on the council, when it was over on Aroma. Many years it was moved over to San Jose Little League and a lot of the people they talk about, I have been to all the openings of San Jose Little League and donated a lot of my time and money over there and I didn't see a lot of people that come here and beat us up on those fields. And I was there. Mr. Miller, the former president of District 19, knows me. I've donated food and pizza to every sports league in this city when I had my pizza parlor and I would disagree with you, Mr. Williams. I have been there. Richard Melendez was not there when the thing moved. That is not correct. His kids aren't old enough, just for the record. Okay? The league went there many years ago. Richard Melendez has two daughters and I know the people that built that field when it was at Aroma and when the San Jose Little League moved. I just believe some of your information and I appreciate what you're trying to say, but it is misleading to say that exact thing. There's a big difference when parents volunteer years of their time doing and Maverick Field speaks for itself. Go over there and look at the field. It's still maintained like that. Go look, it speaks for itself.
Let's, I don't want to get into a back and forth here. Please, please, Alfred, you know better. Mr. Williams, you know better. Irene Fleck?
Well, as usual, I have happy news. There's lots of things going on at the library. The calendar is very full, but I'm just going to highlight three things. The first thing is tomorrow, there's a birthday party, because it's, we celebrate Dr. Seuss's birthday. This is at 4:00. It's always really incredibly interesting and fun. And this celebrates Read Across America Day. So all the libraries across America are having the birthday party tomorrow for Dr. Seuss. So there's hats and everything, you've probably seen them around town. The second thing is, the second Saturday meeting on March 12th, from 3:00 to 5:00, is about baseball and it's baseball for the fun of it. And I know you guys all like this sort of thing. And it's going to be a sort of a different program. The author, Dan Epstein, is talking about his book, Big Hair and Plastic Grass, A Funky Ride Through Baseball and America in the Swinging Seventies. Now, I understand from talking to friends that this is really a pretty hot issue and it's going to be something that's going to be fun. And there'll be a baseball display on all this stuff for the month over at the library. And then the third thing is something that we're kind of excited about. Save the date, please. It's Thursday, April 7th, from 5:30 to 7:00. And we're having a Friends of the Wes Covina Library Community Mixer and this is sort of a kickoff for National Library Week. So you'll get more information on that soon. And just as a side, I want you to know that a lot of my friends are really excited about the Dog Park. So please, let's have a Dog Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Elizabeth Peralta, I've got you as an agenda item, but I'm not sure which item. Is Elizabeth here? Which item did you want to speak on? Okay, please come forward then.
Good evening. My name's Elizabeth Peralta and I live in Wes Covina and I'm here to address two issues. The first issue is the street that I live on, Durness. I live at Durness, where it curves into Willow. And we've had problems with speeding parents and speeding youngsters from the high school and the parents that come in the morning to drop off their kids are always in a rush. And I'd like to know if there's study can be done to put some speed bumps there. I'm afraid that somebody's going to get hurt, because as the cars come around the curve, they don't see the oncoming traffic that would be coming north on Willow. That's item number one. Item number two is, I'd like to let you know that I was parked outside my home on the sidewalk, right outside my home, on the curb. And a youngster came by. I understand she was a teenager. I was not home. I work for the fire department and I'm at work 90% of the time. The young lady came and totaled my car. The police department, Wes Covina Police, decided to have my car towed to a yard. I have not had access to the car yet, because I understand that I have to bring $400 to take my car out. Number one, I am the victim. My car was totaled. I spoke to the officer and the corporal that are handling this case and I was told this morning by Deputy Wyshadle, I believe that's his name, that she was not arrested. She hit my car, could not give any proof of insurance, and now I'm the one that's being put on the carpet. My insurance company has not been able to get the police report, since it won't be available till possibly Friday, and I am without a car. This young lady hit my car, totaled it completely, there was glass on my yard and my neighbor's yard, and her license, I'm sorry, her front bumper ended up in my driveway. She returned to retrieve her bumper, since it had her license plate on it and the police were present at that time. But I was informed that she was not arrested, she was not taken in, she had no proof of insurance, so now I'm out of a car and I'm up a creek. The other thing is, I just had my driveway done, thanks to the city of Wes Covina, I received the loan to do my driveway and I spent $10,000 to beautify the front of my home. And a number, I put slate on my driveway and a number of those slate tiles were damaged as well as the concrete. And I spent $500 today to have that repaired. So I feel that I'm being victimized here, because I can't get any information from the police as to who this person is and I'm being made to wait until Friday. So I would like you to address that.
We'll have the city manager talk to you about how to get your car and clarify the situation. We unfortunately don't know anything about the issue right now, so let's let the city manager meet with you and the police department and terribly sorry about all the issues. Paul, did you want to...
I'll talk for...
Okay, up there, Paul Akamari is commander.
And if you can please address the issue of the speeding, because obviously she had to be coming way past the speed limit. There are no speed limit signs on our street and people are not aware that it's a curve until they get to the curve.
That's not the school zone there?
It is a school zone, but there are none on Durness. There are no speed limit signs on Durness and none on Willow.
Are you closer to Conlin then?
I'm sorry?
You're closer to Conlin?
No, I'm right at the curve of Durness and Willow. Yes.
I'll have Mr. Yatsi also speak to you on that issue.
Yeah, there's no reason why we can't get signs up.
Thank you very much.
Okay. All right. That concludes oral communications, so now we'll move on to the agenda portion of our meeting. Let me just say a couple of things before we move on. First, on the letters on the hillside, for those that don't know, we formed a volunteer committee that'll solicit funds outside of the city to, outside of city funding to construct the letters on the hillside, so it won't take any city money. And the other one was on the Dog Park issue. We're seeking a grant for the Dog Park, so it's not also using direct city funds. It would be specifically, and that's what the request tonight is, is to apply for the grant. So we're trying to do the best we can with the limited resources. We just had a budget meeting prior to this meeting and like I think the representative for Senator Hernandez said, the state has a $26 billion budget problem and we've got a, you know, six to nine million dollar budget problem here in the city of Wes Covina. So we're obviously very concerned about the future of our city and the finances, so we're not impacting those areas with both the letters and the Dog Park grant. So with that, we'll move on to the consent calendar. Is there any items to be pulled from the consent calendar?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Lane and second by Armbrus. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries 5-0. Okay, the matter set for public hearing was continued from the February 15th, 2011, regular meeting and consists of amendment to the Chapter 26 of the Wes Covina Municipal Code related to automobile repair businesses in residential zones. City Clerk, will you verify proper legal notice has been given?
Yes, that's verified.
Okay, at this time, I shall open the public hearing on code amendment number 10-2. There will first be the presentation of the staff report, then we shall hear from those in favor of the proposal and then those opposed. Mr. Pazmat, who will present the staff report?
Mr. Anderson will present that report.
Thank you. This is a presentation on code amendment number 1002, to consider code amendments to the auto repair standards in the residential zones. Over the past few years, city staff has received complaints of individuals consistently performing auto repair in vehicles in residential areas. In response, the city council initiated this code amendment on May 18th, 2010, to allow analysis of the current code and recommend modifications. Specifically, the issues are concerned where regards to auto repair businesses and the storage of inoperable vehicles in residential zones. Staff from planning, community enhancement and building worked together to define issues. The planning commission held two study sessions to evaluate those issues and the planning commission held a public hearing on November 9th, 2010, at which time they voted 3 to 2 to recommend approval of the code amendment to the city council. Have a PowerPoint here and you may notice that the numbers in the PowerPoint don't necessarily correspond with the numbers in the staff report. Apologize for that. We kind of put them in priority order here in the presentation. So we'll go through the, there's nine specific changes that are being recommended. First one is to prohibit vehicle repair in the driveway in the front yard. The commission felt that the driveway in front of the house was not the appropriate location for repairing vehicles due to visibility by neighboring properties. They also discussed allowing some type of minor repair in the driveway, but determined that minor repair is usually done quickly and does not normally lead to community enhancement action. The intent, therefore, is to allow community enhancement to address chronic violators. Second item is to change the code to limit the number of vehicles a homeowner works on that are not registered to the address from 24 a year to four. So currently, the code allows a homeowner to work on someone else's car 24 times in a calendar year. The proposal would change that to four times in 12 months. Third one would be to reduce the time period allowed for those incidents from 72 hours to 12 hours. In other words, currently, the code allows for homeowners to work on somebody else's vehicle 72 hours at a time for 24 times a year. Planning commission is recommending reduce that again to four, 12 hours apiece. Number four is to allow community enhancement to cite individuals who are not in compliance with these code requirements without going through the normal procedures. That gives them a little bit more ability to address issues quickly, instead of having to go through a several month-long process. Number five would require inoperable vehicles to be stored behind a six-foot fence or wall. The current code requires screening from all ground-level views. The proposed code provides a more definitive solution and the code also retains the allowance to store inoperable vehicles up to 72 hours, allowing residents time to make arrangements to relocate the inoperable vehicle to garage, rear yard or to mechanic shop. Next one that would restrict car covers as not qualifying as screening for inoperable vehicles in the front yard. Also, the code amendment establishes a definition for auto broker by referencing the California Vehicle Code. And then the next one is, provides a definition for auto repair in residential areas, which is different than auto repair in commercial areas. And lastly, the standards that are applied to single-family are also applied to the multi-families zone section of the code. The planning commission did recommend approval of the code amendment after significant discussion on trying to find the line between allowing residents to work on their vehicles and respecting the rights of neighboring residents. The descending commissioners were concerned about subjecting minor repair issues to code enforcement efforts and concerns that the code was not strong enough to allow community enhancement personnel to enforce the rules. That concludes the presentation. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, do we have any questions? Mr. Tuohy?
I'm a little confused. You mentioned auto broker, because I know individual rented, that he owns the Wes Covina Car Wash and he wanted to get his auto broker license at his commercial place and we had standards that you needed two parking spaces. How could you have one in residential area if you require a commercial rental at a business location? How could you have it in the first place? I'm a little confused there. We already have codes that deal with that, because you didn't give that person a license.
You're correct and I didn't cover that very well. The reason we're establishing an auto broker definition is so that we can make sure that if somebody's doing auto broker in a residential area, we can define it and tell them they cannot do that. You cannot do an auto broker lot in a residential area.
But DMV doesn't allow that to start off with.
Agreed.
Then aren't we just making a repetitive law for no reason but to...
The reason that we put it in there is to give code enforcement another tool to establish that someone is doing a business, whether or not they have a business license or approval from DMV. If they're operating as a auto broker, in other words, they're buying and selling cars from their home, bringing them to their home and then selling them, then this allows code enforcement to define it as such and then try to establish that fact and make them stop.
Once again, I'm confused, because we do it against people that rented in a commercial area and they were denied. So I am confused by your statement, but it's okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a question about the procedure here, Jeff. If there's any changes to this tonight, does this have to start all over again through the planning commission or can you make minor changes and move forward? I guess City Attorney?
If I may, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. If you make minor changes, I do not see any need to send it back to the planning commission. The planning commission has made a recommendation to the city council, but you have the ability to adjust and adapt to what the council's pleasure.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, any other questions? Okay, that concludes the questions from the council at this time. We'll open up the public hearing portion. First, we'll have those in favor speak and then those in opposition. I don't see a rebuttal tonight. Is that a new wrinkle on this? We're not going to allow rebuttal?
Because it's not an application for an entitlement, this is a code amendment, that's why you do not see... why you do not see rebuttal this evening.
Okay. First speaker is Dave Stewart.
Deputy Mayor Herbert, council members Armbruce, Tatui, Lane, Anderson, and staff. For the record, I am a planning commissioner, and I just want to give you my insight of what we had talked about. At no time did I think that you couldn't do normal minor repairs in the front of your house, such as a flat tire, or wash and wax your car, or minor things, changing bulbs or anything like that. What we talked about, if you're gonna go as far as changing an engine, which some people could do on an older car, if it's behind the fence, you're in the garage, you're welcome to do it. I have a neighbor who has a show car, and he does everything in his garage, and we never see the car except when it goes in the trailer to go to the show. And it doesn't bother me a bit. He's four doors down from me. But the point is that, you know, West Covina is known for, city of beautiful homes, and I drove around a little bit today on the way home. Took me 10 minutes to find, I brought some pictures with me, two houses that apparently the neighbors are afraid to call in and complain about it. I'll pass these pictures in a minute here. But they all have covers in the cars, and it's a plain mess, and three doors down is a beautiful home. But anyway, I don't see any problem with doing minor repairs. And another thing is, on today's cars, you have to have so much equipment, you know, like computerized things to make the car repairable. People don't have that in their home as a rule, so basically, you're talking about older cars. And I know there's homes in the city that have one-car garages with a short lead-in, and they have a problem. They couldn't probably get the car in the garage and repair it. But as for most of the people, I kind of look at things as for best for most of the people in the town, and that's what I did. And actually, I was in favor of what we did, and without even thinking about people saying they can't change their tire, that was not ever in my mind. You can do minor repairs. So I just wanted to pass it on to the council and keep the record straight for myself.
Okay, thank you.
I'll pass these pictures around. I've got four. I don't care if I get them back or not. I'll give them to Stewart.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker is Nancy Ayden.
Reason I'm here is because I'm a member of the West Covina Symphony Orchestra, and our conductor is sick, and so we're not having rehearsal tonight, so that's why I'm here. I'm very much, I think this ordinance, be better probably, I could think of a lot of ways of tightening it, but I think it's a first good start, and I recommend getting it going and doing that kind of thing. I don't think that anybody should think that they can't change the oil, or change a tire, or do minor repairs on cars and things like that. It isn't meant for that. It's meant for people who repair, and repair, and repair, and repair, and then when they're finished repairing, they repair, and they repair some more. Just a few other things. One is that I think that if you had an ordinance that got cars off the street on street sweeping days, all cars, off all streets, you might eliminate people who have 10 or more cars when there's really only room for four. And I'm also was very disappointed in the council when they voted to not, to enhance parking overnight in West Covina. There is no parking overnight in Walnut, there's no parking overnight in Laverne, and I think there are other cities where there is no parking overnight on the street, and I don't understand why we don't have that. I think you gave into a vocal minority who were here, and I wasn't here, and I was very sorely disappointed. I think that was probably your worst vote, or certainly on top of some of the worst votes that I've experienced. I also would like to read to you the city council goal statement, because I laughed. Under responsive government, to guarantee the safety, well-being, and protection of local residents and property rights, a maximum effort will be made to ensure West Covina will be safe and a maintained community. If that's the case, how come we have so much car problems? How come we have so many cars on so many streets, and they're parked overnight? How come they're not moved when the street sweeper comes through? The other one is to vigorously protect under community safety precautions and service, to vigorously protect and enhance the aesthetic and environmental quality for the entire community, with human beings being met with the financial capability of the city to foster and promote neighborhood identity and the values and goals of this community as a whole. I don't see how that, how these city council goals coalesce with car repair, excess car repair, or car restoration, which I don't think should be done in a residential area, period. Car restoration is a whole different ball of wax. Everything has to be taken out, everything has to be cleaned, machine down sometimes, put back, and it's a big mess, and it's fairly extensive, and I don't see why it should be done in a residential area. I'm not against people doing that. I think there are beautiful vehicles out there when they restore these cars. They're gorgeous, and fine, just don't do it in a residential neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Lloyd Johnson. Lloyd, I know you didn't put in favor again, so I will put you in the middle here.
Good evening, mayor, council. First of all, I am for the ordinance. I think that we should take a good look at it, because, you know, I see some of the problems that a lot of the people talk about. If I pull in my driveway, which I don't have that problem, because my garage is behind the gate, but say my garage is in the front, and I can't put it in the garage, I pull in my driveway, and my water pump goes out, or I blow a head gasket. Now, I can't afford to pay $1,000, take it to mechanic. If my car's gonna be down for, say, maybe a week, or something like that, why couldn't there, for instance, maybe come to the city, go to the code people without any charge, get a permit, put it in your car, saying, hey, my car's gonna be down for a week in my front driveway? This way, if the neighbors complain about your car being down, you're being worked on, that the code people goes out there, they see the permit in the car, and say, well, this car's gonna be parked here from this date to this, maybe it's gonna take 10 days, but let them know what it's gonna take to get the work done. And now, you can also keep control of people working on cars by that permit system, because if a person's doing a bit or working on cars, if they have to come in and get a permit, every time they get a permit, it's gonna be registered to it, and they're gonna know where the addresses are of people working on cars. That's something to think about. But I do see that we do need some kind of ordinance for it, but I don't think we should punish the people that if their cars, like I say, if they blow a head gasket, or their water pump goes out, that they should be able to fix it instead of paying $1,000 to have someone else to do it. So I hope you consider that, that we can kind of help clean up that way.
Thank you. Okay, those opposed, Frank Skislock. Sorry about that.
First of all, I want to make a motion, excuse me, you need council members, Mr. Mayor, and city employees. I'd like to make a motion, this is an illegal meeting, it wasn't represented to the people of West Covina. You got a one-day notice in the mail about this, I mean, in the newspaper about this, which I think it should have been at least a week ago, and I think everybody should have got a postcard in it saying that there was gonna be a meeting going about this driveway mechanic work, to begin with. And I'm against it, this new law concerning what and what we can do on our property. I'm also against the visitors in the residential area. If a person goes away for vacation and covers his car for a week, it's on his property. If the person wants to change his tire, it's on his property. If my wife gets sick and leaves her car outside for the day, for a few days, and it's gonna be towed out, tow it, we'll get a fine. If we can't park, the car's on the street, park our cars in the garage, what are we supposed to do with them? The law is for private citizens who uses their home to live in. And I'm retired. I'm looking to redo a car, and I got no place to do it but on my driveway. I got no six-foot fence that I can put a car behind. So, I really think that this should be represented with everybody in West Covina, get a notice from you people that they're gonna be meeting on this auto repair on driveways. And PS, people of West Covina don't like to be dictated to. And the issue of the residents having businesses, I agree with you. Business in the residential area, no. But people working on their car, and like I said, I wanna work on a 55 Chevy, and I can only put it in my driveway. I got a 30-foot driveway, and that's all it can be. I got no place to put it behind the house, can't get by in house. This is one of my problems.
Okay, I think we hear, and?
And I think we should send postcards to everybody in West Covina to let them know about what's happening here, not a one-day notice in the newspaper.
Yeah, well, we didn't publish that as a newspaper, probably. No, just so the public's aware, I mean, we're all up here with a neutral point of view. What I'm interested in is what you have to say. You know, you seem to say that?
I'm against.
Commercial business in a residential area is a no. You don't have a fence. I don't have a fence in my yard either, so if I'm gonna change the oil, you know, this ordinance will prohibit me from doing it on the driveway. You know, so I have concerns too, so just so you understand.
I change my oil, I do tune-ups in my driveway, like I said, but I do wanna, I do wanna restore a 55 Chevy.
And?
I'm looking at one now to buy.
I'm looking at that as, you know, what's the solution to that? So, maybe a permit or something like that is a way to do it. I don't know. I mean, I don't?
Permit to pay money? Is that what you're looking for?
I don't have to have money, but I mean, if that's a way to regulate it?
If you gotta get a permit to do something like this, then as long as there's no charge, I don't care. I'll get a permit.
Okay, well, we're looking for a solution, so maybe that's one. Okay.
I hope I gave you some solution.
Yeah, you did. I appreciate it. Thank you. Mike Disarofino.
Good evening. My name is Mike Disarofino. I live on Maureen Street in West Covina. I'm against this, because sometimes when you have a neighbor that's vindictive, that doesn't like you, will be reporting you for every little thing. I've already been through all that. I've already cleaned up my act and all that, but the thing is, my, every time I open my garage, I don't want code enforcement running over there. And I got someone that calls on me every time, I mean, for any little thing. And, you know, I don't think it's right. You know, and I've had fire department, police department, code enforcement, parking enforcement, you name it, except the dog catcher, that's the only one. But everybody else has been to my house. I'm painting cars in my garage, allegedly, fire department came, they found no paint, no compressor, no nothing. These are all false charges, but I have to go through this, and I don't think it's right. Now, with this tune-up, changing tires, or whatever it is, it's gonna just mean one more tool for that person to send someone over, and I don't think it's right. I grew up a 10,000-foot fence in a bush between me and my neighbor, so they don't have to see nothing. It's the best I could do. Thank you.
Thank you. Brad McFadden.
Council members, I'm the mayor, how are you?
Good.
Good to see you. Well, I just came down, because I wanted to let you know how I felt. We gotta get out here once in a while and let you guys know what I think, right? I read through the ordinance, but I just got it today, because I didn't find out about it till today. And in any event, I got it from the city. Thanks for sending it to me. I'm hoping this is the whole thing that I got, but anyway, I'm gonna just go. I think that, I disagree with parts of it, because I think that it's not properly drawn up right. I don't want to take a lot of time, but I mean, I didn't have time to send anything to the council, because I didn't have enough time. But if you start with Article 9, Section 26438, which is part of this part here, which I was, it starts off with Section C, inoperable vehicles, and it says, no more than one inoperable vehicle may be kept on-site per dwelling unit, and may be kept on-site for more than 72 hours. If so kept, an inoperable vehicle must be fully kept, must be fully within a garage, carport, or other approved parking space. And I don't know what that other approved parking space means, unless it means or backyard or side yard, which is fully screened by a solid six-foot fence or wall and view obscuring landscaping, because you have contradictions. In some paragraphs, it says that you can't have a, like in your backyard, if you have a car, it has to have a six-foot wall or fence solid in one section, and then in another section, it says you can have it landscaping that obscures it also. So it kind of contradicts in certain paragraphs through the ordinance, so it's kind of like confusing. I'd refer you to Section 26392, inoperable vehicles, Section F, as compared to 26438C. They talk about inoperable vehicles, but are these the same, is, this is what I got that's proposed, so I'm assuming these are two parts of the ordinance that are being proposed, and they're kind of contradictory. Am I wrong?
Mr. Mayor, just want to clarify that exhibit you're referring to, the only changes that are being proposed from planning have to do with the underlying bolded sections. The rest of the sections, first one you cited was already a pre-existing code section, that's under definitions.
Okay, so this exhibit is, this is the law, but you're out, you're removing the lined-out part?
What the staff has included there, I believe, is just some of the definitions in this from other sections of the code, so that when you try to tie it back and forth, you know what the definitions mean. And I can't see the copy you have, but they should have it bolded.
So that's proposed ordinance there?
That is the ordinance, but it includes just the underlying portions or the changes that are being recommended.
So the underlying portions are the changes?
Yes.
They're being added?
Everything else is pre-existing.
Okay. Well, anyway, I'll just make it clear, because I don't want to confuse everybody completely on this, that I think that you should, if you, you should limit it to two cars in the backyard, whether they're operable or inoperable, as long as you have, if you want the six-foot solid fence or wall, or and/or a, some kind of screening, like landscaping, or trees, or bushes, because a lot of people can't afford to put in these six-foot walls, or fences, they're very expensive. A brick one can cost you $5,000 to $10,000. So, but if you have bushes, or landscaping, or something that can cover it, that's a lot less expensive, and it might be even more environmentally pleasing. So, I just ask you to consider, allow two cars operable or inoperable with six-foot fences or walls and/or view obscuring landscaping. And then, of course, you may be able to restrict, if there's a lot of cans and oil and kerosene and gasoline cans that are, a lot of it that's littering the backyard, that maybe you can, I wouldn't mind, you know, have a problem with you regulating some of that if it's really extensive and overabusive in the backyard. On the front yard or the driveway, I just wanted that it should, you should be allowed, I would propose that you allow to have, you know, if you have one or two cars, or even three cars, if they fit in your driveway. As far as minor repairs go, you should have a provision that allows you to, if your oil needs to be, if you need to add a quart, or transfluid, or oil, or pour some fluid into your radiator, or change the battery, or charge the battery with a, you should be allowed to do that, I think, in your driveway. Usually, it doesn't take too long, and as long as you're not out there all day, I mean, but I'm just saying that that should be permitted. I don't think that should be outlawed in your driveway. I think that that may be outlawed by this law proposed? I'm not sure, but I think it is. So when you had the 2648, it has Paragraph IV, repair shall mean the alteration, restoration, replacement of faulty or missing engine components, body, and fender work, assembling, cleaning of the motor, decreasing, reassembly of mechanical parts of motor?
Mayor, as soon as they see you there, five minutes.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. I figured I got caught on that. Anyway?
Go ahead and finish.
Thank you. Anyway, just the tire repairs, minor tune-ups, battery changing or charging, adding fluid, or maybe even the interior, if you're looking at the interior of your car and you want to replace a knob, or clean the inside of it, or replace, put some knobs on, stuff like that you should be allowed to do. I don't see what's wrong with that in your driveway. And then, other than? And then, other than that, as far as hydraulic vehicular lifts, if they're, maybe if they're small and they're in your garage or your backyard and they're not lifting out ten feet in, above the ground, but it's small ones, they have small ones so you can maybe lift your car up so you can get underneath it to work on it that's maybe three or four feet up. Maybe you can consider allowing some of that if they're not huge hydraulic lifters, you know, just that lift them up three or four feet. And that's about all I have, Your Honor-
Okay, thank you.
And Councilmembers, and thanks to you for the time, appreciate your working on the council.
Thanks, good to see you. Okay, that concludes the public testimony portion, and we'll move into council member questions or comments. Let's, let's first, let me ask a couple clarifying questions here. When I read that Section seven, it says repair shall mean all these different things in here. I don't see changing oil in there, I don't believe. Is that a repair or not? Is that considered a repair?
We- The way it's written, I, I think it falls, we didn't necessarily list everything there. There were certain things we specifically left out, such as painting a vehicle, but there are other things that I think, such as the last part of that statement, "But is not limited to tire repairs, minor tune-ups, battery charging, engine overhauling or similar activities." I would say that that falls under that.
Okay, so any, any, if you outlaw oil, oil change, that's like anything's illegal in the front-
The way it's written right now, and, and I think that one of the commissioners spoke to the point what they were trying to get across, they weren't trying to limit that, but if you leave a window, sometimes the window becomes, you know-
Yeah, it's almost like there should have been an issue with, or definition of maintenance versus repair.
That we could have, yeah, that's one way to go.
And- Hold on, hold on, this is not a dialogue back and forth either. Right now, we're trying to get information so we can make an intelligent decision. The, the other question I have is, there are many of us that don't have a big enough garage to work on a car or don't have a fence that's six feet in front of our yard, so we're, we're, we're pretty much gonna be outlawed to do anything here, and to me, that's a little bit too onerous, but the way that this is structured right now, if somebody had an inoperable vehicle in their front yard under a car cover, we cannot cite them currently?
I'll try to answer that. Yeah, if we get a call from someone reporting an inoperable vehicle and it's in the driveway and it's completely covered, and first of all, we need to be able to determine if it's inoperable or not. If, if we're not able to do that, we probably couldn't cite them. We might knock on the door and ask them voluntarily if it's operable or not, and if we find out it is, then ask them to remove it.
Well, I know other cities, they actually make the person start the car. Is that part of our code or not?
We could ask that they do that. Actually, you know, when someone has their car covered, they have an expectation of privacy, so we're bound by some of the same search and seizure laws as the police department. We need to make sure that we, you know, be careful of those rights that they have. We could voluntarily ask them to uncover it and show that it's operable and have them start it up, make sure it's licensed. And those are the kind of things that we do.
Okay. All right, any other questions? Councilmember Tuohy?
A lot of the problems I have with this, I understand some of the problems people have. I understand operating a business out of your home. But when you write laws and they're ambiguous, they, people can think they're applying to a certain set of standards to one person and a different set of standards to another since you're, the way you wrote it, "But it's not limited to tire repairs, minor tune-ups, battery charging," you can say in other similar activities, that's ambiguous to what that may be. You can charge your, your battery, but you can't replace it. Now, I'm just reading the way you wrote it, and it's confusing to, to me, engine, engine overhauling or other similar activities, yet you say you can't do some engine work. I'm confused what engine overhauling, what you would mean by that, and the problem is that could be different to that person and that person, what that may be, and, and then they're in trouble. And I'm, I'm deeply concerned. I understand what you're saying about cars not being registered to the address, but as my kids get older, they will not always be at my house, and if they need help, based on your law, really, if they needed tune-ups more, or oil changes more than four times a year, that would be in violation. So, since I have two kids, they get two oil changes each, and otherwise, I'm a criminal, but I'm repairing my kids' cars, not someone else's, even if you're helping someone else, but I would assume, you know, with all due respect to what Fred said, hopefully you're helping them at their house, they're not driving the car over to your house and doing it, you know, I, I would expect that. If you're the expert on the mechanic, you should go to their house and do it in front of their house. But some of these things concern me because they are very ambiguous. Some things are clear-cut. Like I said, operating a business is clear-cut to me. Some of these other rules that you have written here, and especially when it comes to us as all of us, you know, kids are getting older, my, my kids will be sometimes living on campus in college, and then I'm in trouble for helping them out. People like Penske and many other companies these days go to your home and do the oil change using a vacuum system at your home. That now is in violation of the law because they're not a private person, they're not, you're not repairing your own vehicle. A company now came out and did that. It doesn't state, the way it states, "You can change your tire, but a tow company can't." I just want to know, because when we're being clear, I don't want to get a ticket because I can't meet some of these same codes other people have. We have many people that have different types of homes. If you live on Sunset, your garage is on the back of an alley. So, it's very difficult where you don't have a driveway or anything to really use. You have an alley and we don't allow you to do nothing in the alley. They don't have a driveway. If you're on the corner of Cameron and Lark Island, you have an eight-foot driveway and no possible way to get your car in the backyard. So, no matter what you do, you're kinda gonna be repairing the car out on the street at that one particular home, you, if you see it, the car has to park blocking the sidewalk based upon how the property was taken when Cameron was widened. We have a lot of weird properties like that, that are, not all of us live in the same type of home. My garage cannot face the street by law or by CCNRs. I have to have a garage door that opens up to the rear unless it's detached, and in the back of my home mine is not. I can never put a garage door in the front of my home. It's hard to move a suburban into, you know, to get passed into the backyard and to ever turn the corner. I don't know if my wrought iron fence is six foot tall, then I'm in violation again. I just have concerns over the way it's written. I clearly understand the auto brokering and people operating a business out of their home like that. If you want to operate an auto repair business, you should be in the proper zoning, but people said you can take the car to auto repair places. We have laws that limit how long they're supposed to stay at those auto repair places. And on the corner of Sunset and Bedillo, at what is a bona fide gas station-
Puente.
Puente in Sunset, I'm sorry. It's a bona fide gas station, but there is a hundred and fifty cars there that stay there. Someone mentioned, "Well, if you have a water pump, it costs a thousand dollars." Well, some people may not have the thousand that week. And I, I understand, but, you know, let's be real, you may have to wait a month, you may be taking the bus till you got a thousand dollars. I don't want to cite someone because they just don't got the money, so.
Okay, any other comments? Councilwoman Lane?
Yeah, I just have some questions because I have some concerns, but, you know, as it's been stated before, is there some way that we can include something into the verbiage here that would say minor repairs or something that we could nail it down? And also, is there some way of looking at some kind of process that it's somebody, you know, is going to work on their car for a certain amount of time and they need more time, that we can go ahead and assist them somehow?
I was fine with the first question, yes, and the Planning Commission did discuss, because some other codes do allow for, for minor repair in the driveway. They restrict repair in the driveway, but then they allow minor emergency repair. They word, it's worded differently, but those can last anywhere, in the codes that we looked at, from twelve-hour time periods up to ten days. So, the ones we saw were twelve hours, two days, three days, and ten days. So, that, that's one way to do it. Another way to do it would be to define what, what minor repair is, and that gets, and I understand some of the, the concerns, especially that Mr. Tuohy brought up, the, when you try to define something as, as wide open as, as repair, it can be difficult to include everything, and that's why we did it that way. But, but we could, we could split that up and to define major repair and minor repair at the best of our ability to try to find that. We obviously probably not get exactly what, what the council feels is the appropriate division, and we could have that discussion.
Thank you.
Well, and I think your second question regarding the permit process, it was kind of discussed a little bit.
Yeah, I think if the council wanted to have a permit process put into the ordinance, I think that would not be an issue. We would probably want some sort of direction on how long you would want to allow that to be, and maybe how many times a year.
Councilwoman Harberst?
Thank you. I agree regarding permit. I think just if people come forward and just be forthright on what's going on, if they're running a business, they're not going to be coming forward asking for a permit. But if someone like the gentleman had said that there's a car that's broke down, their wife's sick, possibly it needs to be covered, that they come in, they get a permit for that, I think that would be something that we should have written in there. Also too, I agree that we need to have, really make it not so broad on the maintenance because times are tough right now. People need to be able to change their oil and to change a battery, and I think it's just too ambiguous right now.
Uh, ma'am, we're-
Know what's going on?
Ma'am, we're- Ma'am, we're in the middle of discussion here. Councilwoman Sanderson, we already closed the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, a resident had made a comment that I wrote down and I thought was nice. West Covina is known for the city of beautiful homes. My question to all you sitting out there, how are we gonna keep it that way? Our job up here is to try and find a happy medium to make everybody happy. One of the biggest amount of phone calls I've received in the almost ten years I've been on council is auto, parking, repair, blight, you know, people not taking care of their homes. And unfortunately, so we sit here and we have to create rules for those people and hurt the people that are doing nothing wrong. And, and I think it's difficult, it's extremely difficult. I, my husband likes cars, he has some race cars, and my son enjoys working on cars, and, so I get that part of it. But I also understand the part where I couldn't take somebody blaring their music twenty-four seven or working at, you know, I don't live next to an auto repair. I don't want to hear banging and smells and things that happen with auto repair twenty-four seven. It, it's just not fair. So, the way I look at this, this is not a one side versus another issue because everyone has property rights, and that's something I think everybody needs to sit back and go, "Okay, I have the right to work on my car." Well, yeah, but that person has the right to live in peace and not have to deal with blight or thinking their property values are, you know, being diminished because they've got, people are in their neighbor's store and junk all over the place. I mean, we have to strike a balance here, and that's what I think we're here to do tonight. And I know maybe some people don't like a permit process, but maybe that's an idea to keep people in check. But the reality is, you know, let's be nice to each other. I mean, let's, let's live together and not be disrespectful to each other. And I guess, you know, again, I had two, two or three calls today on, people complaining that their neighbor has nine cars in their backyard. I'm like, wow! And, and matter of fact, I've had neighbors complain because one of my neighbors years ago, what, owned a auto sales, used car sales. He had twenty-five cars in his backyard. Would you want to look down at that? How would you want, you want to live with that? But then again, I know my husband likes to tinker on his cars, and I wouldn't want somebody, you know, upset at me about that as long as I'm not impacting or impeding their life. So, I guess in saying that, I'm hoping that I can, you know, I think the Planning Commission did a good job in planning staff and coming up with some ideas. These are ideas, these are things that we're trying to, to come up with. And the interesting thing is in, when I was, met with staff and was doing a little bit of research in reference to what staff was presenting, I think the nail, the main thing was is businesses, running a business, you know? And that's what we need to attack. And I think that's where it came from, vehicle repairs for registered at the address, it currently is twenty-four, now they're trying to do four, but then Mr. Tuohy mentions that there's, you know, issues with that. Can it be handled with a permit process? I don't know. You know, I guess that's, unfortunately, I think looking at the planning, I think we can stay within what they've done parameter-wise, and I'd like to hear the other solutions from council, maybe tweaking this a little bit to make it, you know, work. But that's, you know, where I'm coming from, so, thanks.
Okay. You know, I've been here quite a while, twenty-one years, and, you know, we, we sometimes try and reinvent the wheel when it may not need to be reinvented. When I look at the eyesore issue, which is the most important issue to me, we're pretty well-covered in inoperable vehicles. I think the code that we currently have is fine. It, it prevents you from parking an inoperable vehicle in a yard. The only addition we're making is a fully-screen six-foot fence, so I, I don't necessarily think we have to do much there. And you're only allowed two inoperable vehicles in an enclosed garage or rear side yard, so that prevents somebody from hoarding a bunch of cars in their backyard. The car cover issue, we added that to it, but I just heard from staff that it's almost impossible because of privacy rights to enforce that, so I don't think that really does much to us. The vehicle repair in a driveway, as I stated, I have a driveway without a fence. I'm not, I'm not willing to give up my right to, you know, change a starter or to do a repair in my driveway. I just don't think that's what, what the intent of codes are in the city to do. We, we should be able to work on our cars, a lot of people, it's a hobby. So, the, the view I have of this is that the auto broker issue where people are buying and selling cars as a business is the main focus that we should be focused on here and not so much the hobby or the, the repair or maintenance of a vehicle, because I think we're hung up on that, and I think that's creating some emotional issues which don't need to be there. So, as it stands now, I don't think I'd support this, but I'm open to if anybody has, I mean, if we're gonna, if we're gonna redo this, I think we're gonna have to send it back. I'm not necessarily in favor of doing that. The other, I, one more question. Code enforcement and at our level, we get calls on everything. I, I have neighbors that call on yard, yard issues all the time. You know, we get personally involved in these things and they're the most difficult thing to settle. Somebody who doesn't mow their lawn, lets weeds grow, or has some eyesore in their front yard or paints their house in a truce color or whatever it is. And code enforcement is a tool we use to get compliance. We don't do it as a punitive tool, at least that's the way it's been used in the past. But if you were to go out, Jeff, or I guess, who would, Shannon, you'd be the one to handle the code enforcement issue? If you were to go out and somebody was in violation of this, you would cite them, right? You wouldn't fine them?
We have a number of tools. We could, we can write them letters. If it's a first-time offender, a lot of time we'll write them a letter letting them know it's a violation and educate them on the code. Usually what happens is they'll call us, we give them ten days to cure it. If they need more time because of a financial situation, a lot of times we give people a couple more weeks or thirty days, you know, to, to get these clean, things cleaned up. If we have a situation where there's repeat offenders, we have a citation process, and the first citation would be a warning. And if they don't clean it up or they repeat that violation in six months, then they can be cited with a fine. One change in the ordinance does allow us to cite people on the first time, but again, it's just one of those tools that we can use for repeat offenders.
Okay. All right. Councilmember Tuohy?
I have problems with most of it. I have no problem with the auto broker, as you stated, Mayor Hurford. Part of these things, it's impossible to document. We currently have rules that only allow you to have two garage sales a year at your home. Okay? How do we know when your first one was? It's impossible to enforce, so this to make up a rule that we're only gonna allow you to repair your car four times and we're not gonna know when the first time was? It's just, I, I don't want to waste staff's time, and if we have that much time, we have more issues if we can go out and measure that personally from my seat. Some of the noise levels, we have noise ordinances now. I don't think we need to go out there. I don't disagree, you know, with everyone who's stated here that you shouldn't be able to do it at all hours of the night. You have certain times, you can do it in the morning till a certain point in time. The five-decibel levels that you've stated in your code means that you cannot mow your lawn because at the property line, you're above five-decibel levels. And if it bothered your next-door neighbor-
And if it bothered your next-door neighbor, they legally have a right to complain and phone code enforcement. And we have many services. We have come to our home if you ever have your trees trimmed, and they start up that shredder. Oh, my gosh. That thing makes a tremendous noise. It's well above the decibel levels, but you're doing something. I understand. When do you do it? Since you can't keep it above the five decibel levels, do you load it all up and drive it down the street into Covina and do it in their city? I'm very, I'm very concerned with some of these things. It's just hard. It's nice to say, and I guess I can, you know, make statements that sound good, but they're impossible to enforce. We already have most of these laws on our books, and if we actually enforced the rules we have on noise ordinances, there's no need for that. We currently have rules that obviously prohibited a guy who owns the car wash from having an auto broker business at one of his bays.
You all right?
I'm glad he moved the door. I thought that was a ghost. It is some of these, we didn't allow a commercial business who did it the way the code asks for and spells out for it to do it. So we enforce it against an actual commercial person who did it what our rules say, and we still didn't allow him to. To me, there's a lot of, it can always be personal. Normally, when someone gets cited from code enforcement, we get 150 complaint letters for whatever they did wrong. That's what we get. They go out and find every one of their neighbors who have violated the law. And I'll never forget when I lived on Tolan Street, my neighbors three doors down were having a dispute on a height of a fence that was built between them in the front yard. So they pointed to my hedge, which was beautifully manicured, but we have an ordinance that your hedge cannot be above 42 inches in the front yard. So I had to go there because they got me in the middle. I had to go there and whack my hedge. So you've seen all the branches. It looked terrible. It met the code, but it looked like crap. And hopefully, that's not what our ordinances are about either, too. They're supposed to be for making the community more aesthetic, not being punitive, enforce the rules we have and let everyone live within it. But we can't become a police state. We don't have the money to enforce these rules. So some of you, no matter what's approved, will go away thinking we can actually enforce the rules we just approved. And when we have other neighbors here that dealt with that recycling center, where they just sat behind you and broke, you know, again, how they recycle glass, they just throw the glass in a bin and it breaks. Well, those people happen to be the next-door neighbors to that. I wouldn't want to live there. That sucks. I understand that. We can't be everything to everybody, and we're going to have to try to work together as neighbors as best as possible and enforce the rules that we have. But to me, this is going over it. I definitely don't want someone doing auto repairs at 10 o'clock at night or at 6 o'clock in the morning. But it prohibits anything according to this. Vehicle repair on driveway in front of yard is prohibited. That's 100% prohibited. And I just, again, I'm concerned with that because, and even though I made the joke that I may help my kids, I would help my kids, but I have to go somewhere else. I couldn't repair nothing. I'm not that good. So I always, I heard that Lloyd. So, and I have similar issues that Steve Hereford may have. I couldn't, that parking, people mentioned banning parking. I had the same type of problems with my driveway. It's just not conducive. I can't park more than two vehicles on my driveway. I have a narrow driveway, maybe longer, but it can only take one car. You know, you have to stack them behind. All our homes are built different. Some people can actually meet the code, but a lot of homes can't. So what happens to those people that can't meet the code? Do we just cite them? That to me is unconscionable, and I just think we need to be careful with the rights we have because the more you give away, the less you'll ever gain back.
Okay. Any other comments? Councilwoman Sanderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to just note and confirm with staff that if this doesn't go through, one of the things, like, so people understand, if you have a non-operable vehicle, it still is prohibited in the front or unscreened areas. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. I think a lot of people came tonight thinking we were doing some major changes, and there's really nothing major other than prohibiting the repair when visible from the street. Honestly, I don't, I think it's okay in the situations that everybody's talked about. I wish there was a way that we could have something to remedy a situation where somebody's doing something repetitively, like constantly, and there's nothing for that.
Well, I think if they're running a business, there is, is there not?
Yeah, what would be, if my neighbor was constantly doing something all the time, and what is the, you know, what would be the current process as it stands now?
And you can't run an auto business in a residential zone, right?
No, you can't. And I think the answer to that for the code, right now, if someone were to complain about somebody doing repetitive auto repair, staff would go out, code enforcement would go out and look at the situation. And the current code allows 24 different vehicles to be repaired in a 12-month period. So they would have to count to 25, basically, in order to start code enforcement action on that.
That's 24 separate vehicles? Not just like repetitively on the same vehicle?
Twenty-four separate vehicles.
Wow.
That's, those are vehicles not registered to the address. That's how you define a business. They would have to be working on vehicles not.
So even in our current code, it has to be the owner's cars? It can't be like a business, right?
Right. But it's 24 times. But if you're working on, if someone's working on their own car, then there's no restriction on that. There's no restriction on that.
Oh, I see. You're saying that it has to be not registered 24 times?
And that's kind of, as we look at, that's kind of the definition of a business. You're working on somebody else's car. Now, that's how an auto repair business works. The auto broker works a little bit differently where you purchase a car, and you might fix it up and sell it. You purchase another one, you fix it up and sell it. So there's two different kinds of businesses that could attempt to operate in a residential center.
So it would be, you know, if we didn't adopt the planning commission recommendation, but only added, it sounds like two councilmembers were interested in adding the auto broker to the ordinance, then that would be something that can be.
That would help, that would be helpful to code enforcement to try to address those issues when they found people buying and selling vehicles many times in a 12-month period.
All right. So that addresses that issue without being, restricting the property owner who's just fixing his kid's car or whatever. It's dealing with somebody that's buying cars and selling them and, you know, repairing them and doing that type of thing.
You said your definition of an auto repair is 24 vehicles?
Let me try to be clear on that. I look at it in two types of auto businesses, and we just talked about the auto broker. An auto repair shop would be somebody repairing other people's cars consistently, not their own cars.
Right.
People coming and going. The code now says that that person can do that 24 times a year and not be defined as a business. The code allows you to do that.
Okay.
And the planning commission's response to that was to change that to four.
Okay. But when I read what it says with four, that doesn't necessarily say that. Doesn't say it's a business.
No, it does not say it's a business. You're right. There's a little bit of understanding going in. It doesn't say that this defines it as a business, but that's, that's sort of how that was looked at in discussions.
Yeah, I think that the bottom line here, if we're going to walk away tonight, is just addressing the business aspect of it. I think we definitely need to do that because I don't think our current code deals with that. And I don't know, adding the auto broker or possibly, I mean, if honestly, if my husband repaired 24 cars that didn't belong to him, I'd kill him. That would be way too many cars. But the reality is, that didn't belong to him. I mean, that's what our current code says, right? Am I understanding that correct?
Yes.
And I think we need to define what a business is. I just think 24 is an arbitrary number. I mean, if there's somebody that's buying and selling, repairing vehicles in their yard and charging a fee for it, you know, I think there should be a little bit better definition than just 24. So I don't have a problem with that. But, you know, I think the ordinance, as it's drafted here, I don't think it's going to get support to go forward. So if you want to bring back at another time a definition of an auto repair business, I think that might be the solution here. Okay?
Yeah.
Any other questions, comments? Okay. Let's have a heading in the ordinance.
Excuse me, sir. Sir, you can't just scream out from the audience like that, sir.
Yeah, well, just so you're clear, if we don't vote this ordinance through, you're still okay to do that. If it's inoperable for a long time, or, okay, then you're okay. Yeah, you're going to be all right.
Mr. Mayor, in terms of a heading of the ordinance, unless there's a motion to move forward with the ordinance.
Okay. Do we have any motion?
What you can do is refer it back to staff at this point, or refer it back to the planning commission, however, or if you wish to, if there's a motion to.
I'll make a motion, just because I want to take a vote to vote this down, and then we'll bring it back. Okay? I'll make a motion to introduce the, we have a heading in the ordinance. You have a second?
Second.
Okay. Second by Councilwoman Harbors. This item that we're voting on is the ordinance that was proposed tonight. So if there are three votes aye, then it moves forward. If there's not, then it will die, and we may do something else. But all those in favor, say aye? Opposed? No?
No.
Any abstentions? Okay. That's a five, zero ayes, five no. Okay.
And I don't know if it would be appropriate, Mr. City Attorney, if I could make a motion just to have this come back and as an auto broker and a definition of auto broker, and how many cars would be allowed in that period of time to address that particular issue?
Yeah, I think, let's bring back to, I don't know if that's going to the planning commission, but let's just get a definition of what an auto repair business is.
With the council's consent, what I can do is just have the staff work on perhaps a little white paper explaining what that might look like.
Right. And just to give a little bit of clarity, for staff purposes, to be able to, and then, you know, I did have a question, too, in reference to the citation, because I know it's a lengthy process and it actually costs us a lot of staff time. Is there a way to, when you're dealing with an auto broker situation, to expedite that process?
Yes.
Oh, inclusive with that, if it's okay with the council? Does that make sense? If you, you know, because what happens is, staff will go out 10 different times and not accomplish anything. Was it, because it was mentioned in our, the planning commission's recommendation was to kind of streamline the process a little bit. So I don't know if that would fit into the auto broker situation.
Councilmember Toohey.
I believe if we involve the DMV, because they have clear rules, how many cars you're allowed to buy and sell a year, that if you're flipping them, you need to register with them like that, number one. And I want to make sure this to take care of Frank's problem. You can't fix up cars if they're older than 1956. What year was that car you were getting? Right.
Okay. All right. I think staff has direction. And as far as the ordinance, it's denied, so it's status quo as far as automobile repair. Next item on the agenda is councilmember reports. Is there any AB 1234 reports? No? Okay. Next item is community development commission requests, studies. Anybody have any studies, requests? Okay. Comments from the council? Any comments? Let's just say, this is the time of year for little league openings. We've all been out in the community, visiting our little leagues and our sports leagues, and also a time, I've talked to a couple of classes, and so we're kind of focused on youth a little bit, and I'm very impressed with our schools and our youth in the community. Councilmember Toohey.
I just want to make sure we, based on this, what you said, make a motion to adjourn the meeting in memory of Dave Shively, who was our longtime DARE officer. I don't know if you have that.
We do, and thank you for that motion.
Go ahead then. I'll go ahead and let you read the full bio, but, you know, Dave clearly had an impact, and it was always involved with my kids and many other kids in our community who ran the DARE program for many years in our, in our city, and he'll be missed at least.
Yeah, I don't have a bio, but I would echo those sentiments. Dave was a terrific man and a teacher, gave so much to our community for so many years, and was still active, was actually coaching basketball prior to his passing, and his services are on Thursday mornings. So we will miss Dave greatly. I also want to add to the adjournment, Andrew Jack Wilson, who was a 50-year resident of West Covina, and he was very active in our community, too. And his family, I saw them up there tonight and gave them my condolences. He was a great leader in our community, and he will be greatly missed. So we have those two adjournments. Councilwoman Sanderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to briefly say about Mr. Shively, and Dave was a great guy. He was one of the first people I met when I started getting involved in city politics.